Thank you to our very own Graham Prairie Boys Choir for the audio of Oh Canada and to the National Film Board for the video images that were on the screen. I would move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes from May 13th. Councillor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And I move the minutes of the city council meeting held May 13th, 2013 be adopted.
Thank you very much, Councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on those, that set of minutes? Did anyone note anything out of order? Councillor Rice?
Before we vote, my...
Okay, I think we got it over there. Okay, so seeing nothing on the minutes then, I'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries and we move on to adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented? Councillor Rice?
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much, Councillor Rice. Discussion or debate on the agenda as presented. Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing. I would have this as the opportunity for anybody that wanted to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I think we had at least one person that said that they wanted to come forward. Sir, if you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself. Hi, Matt. And maybe just, that microphone, see if it picks you up. As it is, it might.
Hello, hello, hello. Good. Hi, council, mayor. Seen you before. I was in here a few months ago talking about Aqua Terra and a pay-as-you-throw-away...
Please just make sure that you introduce yourself.
Oh, Matthew Charbonneau, general community member. Yeah, I was here a few months ago, inquiring about pay-as-you-throw-away garbage collection program. And it kind of went dead in the water, I found. I asked Aqua Terra to look into it and it seemed like they were quite uninterested and they, they went as far as posting something on Facebook saying, "Are you guys interested?" And there was mixed reviews. Anyway, so, they, in the survey they conducted in 2010 or 11, I think, they got 48 percent of the survey were in support of a bi-weekly collection. And that was during the time when the recycling program was just getting, getting rolling and getting into effect. And despite the 48 percent, they still went on to a weekly collection. But now, since we've got our recycling, you know, going, that you're seeing like tons of positive responses, I think 90 percent of the public are using it and they're feeling really good and getting lots of good feedback. I think that there needs to be a bit more of an inquiry into whether we can do a bi-weekly collection or a pay-as-you-throw-away collection. It seemed like Aqua Terra, you know, they said that it would be too expensive, too time-consuming, and that the public are just generally uninterested. So I conducted my own little survey. I tried to make a petition and make it as legitimate as possible, but I realized later on that petitions are only good for 30 days or something. So it was dated for two months. Anyways, I got 200 signatures saying, "In support, I can deliver them to you folks once I'm done with my grant." So yeah, that's, you know, 200 people want to see it and they're in support of it. I got tons of good feedback from it. And I did a bit of research today because the bills are going up. Aqua Terra raised their rates. And the whole idea for them to do the whole gas-to-power thing is so we're not paying as much for our water, yet our rates are still going up and up. It's confusing. Anyway, so Aqua Terra rates, I think, cost me in total $27.17 for garbage collection and recycle program. Just those two things, not the water franchise fee, none of those other fees. So $27.17 for just garbage and recycling. Whereas the St. Albert pay-as-you-throw-away system, they have recycling, they have compost, and just a general disposal. They have flat fees. Right now, they're at, the flat rate is $6.67, this is monthly, for their flat rate. And then there's $5.58 for recycling. For organic matter, $5.86, which is weekly collection in the summer months, and then a bi-weekly collection in the winter. And then they have a sliding scale rate depending on the size of the bin. So 60 liters is a buck 12 a month, 120 liters, $4.47, 240 liters, $9.14. So that's where you would get your savings and the pay-as-you-throw-away sliding scale. And even then, just the flat fees is only $18.11. So if I was to just get the, say, the 60-liter bin, I would still be paying, you know, about 20 bucks. So it'd be a saving of, you know, seven, eight bucks a month. So it seems like they're able to do it and they're able to do it very affordably. And on the St. Albert website, I think they noticed, since they started it in 2009, I think, they've had a 25 percent reduction in their waste. So I would like to see the city put a little bit more interest and initiative into seeing what they can do to reduce the waste. You know, as part of the Earth Day event with the recycling depot and organizations, and it seems like Grand Prairie is not doing so good in recycling. So I think just to get more people thinking about it and, you know, making a bit more conscious decisions and, I think, doing said pay-as-you-throw-away is a really great way to get people involved and conscious of, you know, how they can make their little part. Councillor Gustafson, I think your wife signed it, a bunch of people from the Parks Department, a bunch of people within the city have signed it and showed a lot of support, so, yeah.
Thanks very much, Matt. Any questions for Mr. Charbonneau? Councillor Rice?
Does the sliding scale not penalize families?
Well, does a flat rate not penalize single people living in individual homes?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Given. I think it's always good to try to find the best way to save in Aqua Terra bills. I am one thinking they've been increased quite a bit. The bottles is an issue. I'm wondering, as I said, we're up there for a throwaway of bottles, which could go to charities. So maybe there could be some new way of trying to, I know if you go to the landfill, there's an area you can put it and they pick the charity to go to, but maybe there's some other drop-off areas or maybe someone willing to get them. I think there's an opportunity there for bottles. Me and myself, I like the weekly pickup, but I have family in St. Albert. But one thing I realized since I've been on council is, with the blue bags coming on stream, is it's all trucked emittent to their facilities where St. Albert's, it's there.
It's right there.
So there is a big difference there for living up in the north and we pay on that issue. I'm more on water that you need to live. And the other one I was hoping for is composite. I got two six-year-old kids and I have to get a composite in my backyard. But actually, Aqua Terra wants this for the gas to help save the money, but actually pretty soon they're not going to be getting mine. So thank you for coming forward on this. Bottles, I'd definitely love to see something.
Well, the conclusion we got from the bottles was, you know, the Recycle Plus Depot, you can call them and they'll pick up bottles. So if it's like, if you live in an apartment or you don't have a car or whatever, just call them and they'll pick them up. It seems like the resources are there, it's just they need to communicate and make it aware for people that it's so easy to do this stuff and have a part.
Maybe more awareness, like advertisement.
Yeah, that was the conclusion of the Earth Day event, was we need to just get a little bit more advertising.
That's good. Thanks for bringing that up.
I see Councillor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Matthew, do you happen to know in the example of St. Albert, if they use full-cost accounting model or is there any mention?
I'm not sure.
Not sure? Okay. Just, they may be subsidizing it through other, through other means, but that might be a question that we could ask administration at a later time, so, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Charbonneau? Don't see anybody else in the queue, Matthew. Thanks very much for coming today and thanks for doing some additional research on the topic. If you did have a list of names, a petition, and in our world it's something very specific, but if you have a list of people who've expressed an interest, you could leave that with staff or drop it by City Hall and we could accept that, make it circulated to council.
Sure. Well, I brought them here with me, plus 200.
Okay, sure. So the lady over there waving her arms, you could pass those on to her and she'll make sure that council sees them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Matt.
So this is the, as I said, this is the delegation portion of the agenda. It's an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and address council on any other community-related matter? I think I know what all the different groups are here for, and so I don't see anybody coming forward. So we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda and we'll move on to public hearings. And we'll go on to item 6.1, Bylaw C. 1100-196, the land use bylaw amendment. I'd call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction. Dan?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are recommending that Bylaw C. 1100-196, which is an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given second and third readings. Helix Engineering, on behalf of the landowners, has submitted an application to amend the land use bylaw to create a new DC-10 site-specific direct control district and change the zoning of lots 3, 4, and 5, Block 2, Plan 062, 1904, from CT commercial transition to this new DC-10 district. The purpose of the amendment is to allow development on these sites to include an outdoor storage component. The subject area is located in the Northridge area. It's comprised of three mid-block lots located between 124th and 128th avenues. And on your screens, it is the area surrounded by the black line. These three lots are double-fronting in that they front onto 102nd Street and back onto 101st. We consider 102nd Street to be the front because it's paved and because it is across the street from a residential neighborhood, that is more likely to increase land-using compatibility problems. Therefore, we're suggesting that 102nd Street is the front and 101st Street at the back is actually just gravel at the present time. The subject area is currently Zoned CT Commercial Transition. As you can see on the map, the area to the north is a mix of CT and CA. Same thing to the south, there's a CA lot and a CT lot. The area to the west in Northridge is a residential area. It's identified as RL, which is single-family residential on smaller lots. If council remembers, a month or two ago, council amended the Northridge outline plan. Previously, those residential lots were going to front onto 102nd Street. Those lots are now going to back onto 102nd Street, which provides an opportunity for a little bit of slightly different commercial development on these three lots. The area is designated Highway Commercial Swing Site in the Northridge Area Structure Plan. Swing Site is something that was identified as potentially accommodating multifamily residential if single, if commercial was not viable. In this particular case, obviously, the applicants are requesting a commercial zoning. The area is not covered by a outline plan. As I mentioned previously, the area to the west is part of the Northridge Residential Outline Plan area. The subject area is currently designated Commercial Transition in the land use bylaw, which is intended for low-intensity commercial and related uses that border residential areas. Because the lots front onto 102nd Street and back onto 101st, a land use economy is created in that the types of uses that are appropriate at the back of the lot are not necessarily appropriate at the front across the street from the residential neighborhood. It is problematic for a lot to have more, to have two different zones applied to it because the land use boundaries can be uncertain. Consequently, land use bylaw districts usually follow property lines. In this case, a site-specific direct control district is being proposed because it can address the unique development opportunities and challenges associated with the site by, for example, allowing commercial buildings at the front of the properties adjacent to 101st Street, sorry, 102nd Street, while only allowing outdoor storage at the back where it's more compatible with the adjacent arterial commercial development on the other side of 101st Street. The proposed district also intends to ensure that any outdoor storage is adequately screened and that the principal buildings are developed to a high standard of appearance. The list of allowed uses that are contained in the proposed DC district are largely the same district uses allowed in the current CT zoning. However, as this is a direct control district, all of the uses listed are at the discretion of the Development Authority. This allows the Development Authority to determine if a specific development proposal is appropriate at that location, refuse those that are not, even if the use is listed in the DC-10 district, and attach development conditions or require a more stringent standard when the Development Authority deems it necessary. The proposed DC-10 district includes five uses that are not contained in the current CT zoning. Four of the uses, broadcast house, commercial business center major, storage yard accessory to a retail store general, and warehouse sales, are allowed in the CA district, which is the zoning direct on the east side of 101st Street. The fifth is only allowed in the IB and IG districts. This use, Contractor General, allows an outdoor, allows an outdoor storage component for construction materials and equipment. The uses in the proposed district are largely the same as under the current zoning. Four of the five uses are allowed in the CA district. The amendment to the Northridge Outline Plan reversed the future orientation of the houses directly across 102nd Street, which changes the nature, will change the nature of this section of the street, making some commercial intensification possible. Allowing these four uses, a subject to the additional authority of a direct control district, provides a balance between the opportunity for additional uses and the authority for the city to ensure that any of the, any use of the site is compatible with the surrounding areas. The fifth proposed use, Contractor General, is currently only allowed in the IB and IG districts. The proposed district attempts to address this by requiring that any building look like a commercial, retail, or office building, not an industrial building, establishes the location for outdoor storage, establishes minimum screening requirements that became, that can be made more stringent if necessary, and as a direct control district, allows the Development Authority to refuse any development or use that it deems incompatible with the surrounding area. Proposed DC district is intended to enable the development opportunities on the site while providing a high level of development control to ensure that all development on the site is of a high standard of appearance and compatible with other uses in the surrounding area. We did public notification and advertising of this amendment and we did not receive any comments or concerns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Welton. So this would be the opportunity for presentation and submission. If there's anybody who would like to come forward to speak in favor of the proposed change, I'd ask them to come forward. Somebody moving back there? Welcome, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillors. I'm Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering. I have with me today Matt Buckta from, representing KCM Construction, and also the developer for this project. Fairly straightforward, don't have a whole bunch to add other than what Mr. Welton had to say there. Intention was, we were, basically, our client was having an issue marketing that property just because the CT zoning is fairly restrictive and with the large size of the lots that are out there, it wasn't conducive to the types of businesses that wanted to be there. And through discussions with planning, basically, it was determined that we couldn't really go towards the lighter commercial and we couldn't really go towards industrials, so we created DC. So I guess on top of what Mr. Welton had to say, if we had any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Looks like we will have some questions. Councillor Rice?
We were doing real well until you started speaking. I thought we were just talking about a storage shed.
A storage shed?
I thought it was just a...
The, no. So basically, what we're, what the intention is to rezone those three lots to, I don't know if I can get something up on the screen there, but to show the, to show the land use, I guess, for those lots as opposed to, let's see if we can get something here.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. We have this, Matt.
I'm not sure if our overhead is working at all, thanks. So if we've got it on Dan's computer, do you have that?
Do you have this? We don't have it? Okay. So the intention of this is to, is basically to provide an opportunity for, to have a building within the, I'll explain it a little bit more with the report that we have here. The front of the building would be aesthetic, I guess, is the intention on 102nd Street. The types of businesses that were coming forward to purchase these lots were contractors and businesses that typically have some outdoor storage, might have a small fleet of vehicles, something like that, which is conducive to the 101st Street gravel road, which is behind this lot. But not necessarily to the residential on 102nd Street, which is a high-volume road on the west. So the intention was to come up with kind of a, specify a little bit more tightly what the types of uses would be in there. And so essentially, what we came up with was two separate accesses, one on either side of the building, one off of 102nd, one off of 101st, with landscaping concentrated mostly in the front of the building, parking lot in the front, much the same as kind of the, and then a building adjacent it, which will basically create a barrier between, or a buffer between the front of the lot on 102nd and the back of the lot on 101st. So in front of the building, we've basically shown a parking area. And we've got some terms that we've run through with planning to identify the types of building and what we want the looks of it to be. And in the rear of the building, we've allowed for, that's where we get into the heavier type of use, and that is where we've identified where there may be outdoor storage for certain types of contractors and whatnot. And then within also a landscaping buffer on 101st Street and access there as well. So what it will create is, and it's very specific, I guess, so, you know, I'll hold it up here so you can kind of see, but that's the, the model, I guess, is we get, we get parking in the front building and then storage. So basically, we've got the industrial component here, a building separating them from the front of the lot, which would be a lot, that would look a lot like the Northridge Business Center buildings, something along those lines, right? So aesthetically pleasing, I guess, if you want to call it that. So, and then obviously with, with construction accesses and whatnot, being able to be off of 101st Street, felt this was a reasonable use for this type of an area, so.
I see, I see some others on the queue here, so.
Yeah, sure.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I don't know, Director Scott or whoever on this one, or Matt. I know some of the business front entries is on 101st, I guess, would be facing the backyard of the storage. So first question, will in the back be fenced? And depending what they're storing in storage units, because there's, there is businesses that will be facing the west, customers coming in, and it depends what you're storing there. Some back storage yards can get pretty different looking. So just a question on that.
Yeah, so what we've, we've got a clause in, in the zoning which says, "Outdoor storage shall only be allowed in the rear yard and shall be screened by a fence of sufficient height and construction to screen the outdoor storage from view from any street." So the intention was that, was to be along 101st.
Okay, thank you for that one. So the other one I was wondering about too is on 102nd Street, when it was passed for the R G for the, now the house's backyard, I know it was just passed recently, going to be eight-feet-high fences, so the berm, but they're still allowed to park on that road, I do believe. And so will this change anything about traffic and parking being allowed there now right in the backyard fence of someone's home with the businesses closing that up and more activity? So Dan, would you be able to answer that? Because would parking maybe have to change on 102nd in that area?
I'm not familiar with what the parking standards are on 102nd Street at the present time. Or, and I, I mean, given how 102nd Street might change or get intensified or made bigger, I don't know what the parking standards are. I'm wondering if the Director of Community Safety might answer, know that.
Ms. Donnelly?
102nd Street is a road that we're currently looking at far as how traffic's going to work and flow on there, because there's quite a bit of traffic currently and it's going to increase in the future. There is some parking that is occurring to the south, but it was never anticipated that the residential lots that back onto this road would use it as their parking. It was anticipated they would use the road in front of their house and their driveways in the front of the house as their parking, so that this wasn't something that was envisioned as being parking for those residential homes.
Okay. I was just wondering too, though, but say if you wanted to come and park there, it's still going to be allowed as, right now, is that true? Parking on the side, because I believe when it came up before, vehicles could park along the side of that 102nd. Am I wrong in that?
Ms. Donnelly, do you know?
In our previous transportation master plan, not the current one, but a previous one, this was actually seen as a four-lane, undivided road, so not having parking. But that was a study that, that was, it was one of our older ones, and I think what we need to do is relook at that road. And you will see a study coming forward in the near future. That request for proposals just closed and we will be awarding the work and starting work on that right away. There's a lot of things happening along that stretch of roads with pedestrians and bicycles and parking. So we will be looking at it closely and bringing it back to you. But if you look back in our historical plans, it was a four-lane, undivided kind of road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. Any other discussions for, or questions for the delegation? I have one, guys, well, sorry, two. First off, do you think this DC zone gives you the flexibility you need to enable these lots to be marketable or more marketable?
Yeah, I think so. We have quite a bit of interest on these three lots already from certain clients, I guess, that, that want to be there and understand that they want to have that, that frontage, I guess, we could say. They're all, they're understanding that the outside storage, if they have any, if they're going to utilize it, or their fleet storage, or whatever they're going to use for, is going to be at the back. So very attractive for clients coming in there. They're big lots, they're two-and-a-half acre lots, so trying to put a convenience store in a two-and-a-half acre lot gets quite hard, right? So a lot of clients, a lot of people in the doors are waiting, obviously, to see what comes of this meeting tonight, and we can, we can explore from there, I guess.
That's, that's good to hear. This is my second question, and I'll ask administration about it after as well, but I just wanted to get your opinion. What about having shared access to the lots? As it's proposed now, I guess I'm imagining, sorry, the way that I understand it proposed now is each lot would have its own direct access onto 102nd. Would there be a potential to consider having a shared access agreement so that, rather than having three new accesses onto 102nd and that we maybe create a different consideration of that? And the reason that I raise that is I'm, fresh in my mind, is our 132nd Street discussion where we have a number of existing uses, we have a number of different accesses on roadway that's handling a high volume of traffic, and ultimately, the city's trying to juggle that. And so I can just foresee a situation in the future where a future council will have to deal with a situation similar on here, where we'll have three businesses, three lots, that'll each have their own individual access, and a council will have to try and figure out how to make that work with the volume of traffic that goes down there. So can you, what do you think?
It's a possibility. It's been done before. It does require a cross-access agreement between the two businesses that own the, own the lots, obviously. However, at development permit stage, it is possible for us to put one of the accesses adjacent to one of the property lines and have that as a potential expansion, I guess, if you want to call it that. Probably on three lots, in a case like that, we would likely get away with two out of the three, which would reduce it by one, obviously. So there is opportunity for that, and I mean, it's something that we definitely could look at with administration if that's where they want to go.
Sure. Well, so just raise that, and so, and I'll ask administration, but the DP stage sounds, development permit stage is very, okay. Thanks very much for thinking about that. I'd like to give time for some others to have some questions. So, Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just, it might be directed to Matt, too. I still haven't had a resolvent, I don't know, Christine's saying they'll get back to about parking 102nd, but I remember it was brought to us by the R G. I'm really interested to see what happens and brought back to us there. But on 101st, I know there's been quite interest by local businesses there to pave it, and they're not, so I'm wondering about that, because some of them that are involved there, about how much they got to put in, 50,000 or 80,000 to pave that street. So maybe, come from community safety, maybe, or what's happening to 101st, or is, if you're buying those lots, that maybe you're going to be, because just the one Ave was Ken Sargent's that's just getting paved after them being there a lot of years. So I'm wondering about that street, so when the builders do come, that's kind of in the process, nothing's decided yet, that those local businesses will help pay for paving it. it. Has that been discussed? Have you thought about that, Matt?
Well, Scott, I don't know if you can shed light on this at all, but I know the people that are, the businesses that are interested in this area have asked about 101st, if it was being paved or not, and my response was always no at this time, the city didn't require it or wasn't going to do it. If that's the case, I, I don't know, that, you know, for us to speak as a land developer, you know, I, I'd have to present it to the clients that are, that are interested in the lot, right? Whether or not they're interested in pitching in to pay for payment or not, so. I don't, I'm, I'm not sure quite about the history of 101st, why it never got paved, it was before my time, before I started with K C M. But I know there was some discussion at that point with my owner as well.
Okay, just throwing out there, because I know some businesses there have been approached recent, and they're, just in the past, that, about everybody throwing some money in the pool, and I don't know if they came to an agreement.
Sure, so Counselor McLean, maybe we can get an answer from Ms. Donnelly?
The city did propose a local improvement for 101st a number of years ago, and that petition, or it was defeated by the people that were along there. So, at this point in time, the city's not pursuing to have it paved, but we'd, you know, definitely be open if the property owners along 101st wanted to bring a petition forward, we could look at a local improvement if, if they brought it forward and proceed in that manner.
Yeah, so there's no city-initiated activity in that regard at this time? Okay, okay, thanks very much. Counselor Wong?
Gentlemen, looking at your proposal here, it looks like what you were looking for was very similar to C A district, and I'm just wondering why you chose to go with direct control as opposed to looking, seeking a C A zoning?
So, we did look at C A, I would say probably was, was the first, the first zoning, I guess, that we discussed. Administration kind of redirected us there. There is some C A adjacent, and obviously, C A is a very broad district, so it allows a fairly wide variety of different types of businesses, and at this point, we, we don't know exactly what will be there. And I believe that C A lot that is there was rezoned after the, the development was constructed, so. The, the reason was, is that C A just allows for a lot more industrial-type development rather than, we're trying to keep it kind of more business in the front and, and a little bit more industrial in the rear, so. So, the, the intention was there, C A would absolutely work, but after we had discussions with administration, they were, they were clear that they didn't want to see a C A type of, of business that could potentially be there fronting on 202nd.
Okay, it's very interesting to me that we don't have a district that really would accommodate something like that, where, that has nice frontage in the front and, and a little more industrial in the back.
And Dan, sorry, it's a further discussion, Scott's saying, with C A, we weren't, we were going too far away from what C T was initially to be, and I guess by doing direct control and putting the map of how we wanted to do the landscape and parking building, we could really control and try to keep that still with, within the guidelines what was supposed to be passed originally, right? So, it was our best effort to still try to get clients in there, but still give the city what they want.
Right, it looks like this D C is written up so that you have a lot of flexibility, which is a good thing. Usually, D C is very site-specific, and it can make, it can seem to make a property less marketable, but it looks like you've, you guys have done some work with administration, and it looks like it's a good way to go.
Okay, okay, thanks, unless there's any further questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody else in queue, thanks very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
So, this is still the public, public presentation or submission portion of the public hearing. I'd look for anybody else that'd like to come forward and address this public hearing in favor or opposed, if there's anybody else that'd like to come forward and address the public hearing. I'll call one last time, if there's anybody else that'd like to come forward and address the public hearing, either in favor or opposed to the proposed D C zone. Seeing none, last opportunity for questions for administration. Counselor Rice?
Dan, just, just to kind of reassure myself that I'm not totally out of it, would it not be fair to say, in spite of the report, what the report says, the purpose of the amendment is not to allow development on these sites to include an outdoor storage component, but rather, the purpose is to enable the development of the site while providing a high level of development control to ensure that all development on the subject lots is of high standard and compatible with the other uses in the surrounding area? Would that not be a more accurate description of the purpose?
Well, certainly the, ensuring a high, a high standard of appearance in the design of the principal buildings is certainly an element of it. The, the reason why, the purpose that, as I identified in the report, is that, I mean, certainly our, our preference and goal is always to achieve a high standard of appearance in design. In this particular case, the C T district doesn't allow outdoor, outdoor storage components accessory to retail or as part of a general contractor. And so, the C, this, this district is very much like the C T district, but allows a couple of uses not currently allowed in the C T, and those uses have an outdoor storage component.
Okay.
Okay, anything further for administration? Maybe I'll just use this opportunity, Dan, can you just speak to about the, the delegation suggested that if there was, administration wanted to consider eliminating one of the accesses and doing some shared access agreement, that that would be possible at the development permit stage? Is that something that's still possible? Or is there anything that we'd need to consider in the creation of this D C district to enable that?
To the mayor, the Section C within the development, Section C of Appendix A in your bylaw makes specific reference to one vehicle access allowed onto 101st Street and one access onto 102nd for each lot, I mean, the references to each lot. If council deems it necessary, you could change that to something to the effect of, "The locations of vehicle accesses shall be at the discretion of the development authority and city engineer." If you're, if you, if you're, if you're comfortable with that, and if that works for the applicant, at the development permit stage, the applicant can then work with our development officers and the engineering department to, to come up with a access solution that, that meets everyone's needs.
Okay, so, so, but that would be an actual, Mr. Walton, that would be an amendment that council would have to propose to the D C zone that's in front of us today, is that correct?
To the mayor, yes, that, that would be an amendment theoretically, or not theoretically, but in, in practice, because this is a direct-control district, everything is discretionary, and in spite of this, if the development authority and the city engineer were of the opinion that three accesses, accesses was excessive on these sites, then they could, using their direct-control authority prohibit three accesses.
Or, and, or another way to say that was, if the applicant was amenable to eliminating an access, that they would be able to work with administration, administration would have that flexibility to support that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, as long as that flexibility's still there and everybody can have that conversation, then that, that's great, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Any further questions for administration before we close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing? One last chance, council? Okay, seeing none, then I would close the public hearing and move to business arising. I would look for a motion for business arising from the public hearing. Counselor Rice?
I move second reading of bylaw, C 1100196, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Rice?
Move third reading of bylaw, C 1100196, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That finishes all of our public hearing business, and would take us to item number seven, unfinished business, which we had none, and that takes us to item eight, reports. And item eight point one is to do a proclamation for C N I B Vision Health Month. We have Bobby and Patsy who are joining us here today, and they're here, client, I believe, of C N I B. And if you'd like to be recognized, ladies, hello? I have the proclamation here, yeah, come and join us at the presentation table. Welcome.
Thank you.
Have a seat, and just like we did with the other delegations, we'll just have you introduce yourselves for the record.
I'm Bobby Weir, I'm a client of the C N I B, and I am also the new coordinator of Client Support Services for the C N I B here in Grand Prairie.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Can Patsy?
This is Patsy Weir, she's my mom, she's a volunteer at the C N I B here in Grand Prairie.
Well, thank you so much for being here and, and joining us today as we make this proclamation. So, on behalf of council, whereas C N I B, the Canadian National Institute for the Blind, wants to make vision health awareness a priority for all Albertans, and whereas seventy-five percent of vision loss is avoidable, and yet every twelve minutes, someone begins to lose their vision, and whereas within the next twenty years, the number of Albertans forecast to be living with blindness or vision loss will grow from a hundred and two thousand eight hundred to an estimated hundred and fifty-eight thousand, an increase of almost fifty percent. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Bill Given, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2013 as Vision Health Month in the City of Grand Prairie. And I'll sign that here today at council. Ladies, thank you so much for the work that you do, Bobby and the community, and on behalf of C N I B and your clients. We also, I think it's important to note, the City of Grand Prairie, I believe, for a long time has been a supporter of C N I B with transit passes for C N I B clients, and we're very proud to be, I think, one of the first, if not the first, community in Alberta to do that. And I think that was a council a number of years ago that made that decision, and so we certainly are proud to be partners of C N I B, and thank you for all the work that you do in the community. I'll come around and we can hand off this official proclamation. We move on to committee business, and item nine point one, 100th Anniversary Committee, Counselor Rice.
I move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held May ninth.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rice. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Rice, anything you wanted to highlight from that?
I did, we had two resignations from members who were unable to continue on the committee because of other commitments, so we are looking for two other members. Where the applications are on the city website, if you just go to the city website in the 100th Anniversary, Anniversary page, we're looking for somebody that has all sorts of enthusiasm and great ideas. Maybe not as many as Counselor O'Toole, but if they had a lot, that would be great. The county has determined that in August of 2014, they'll be doing a salute to pioneers, so. Counselor O'Toole has been working really hard on the hundred days. Counselor Gustafson is getting the homecoming all lined up. The history book is proceeding, they have hired a new, a new writer, and Terry Bolpree is heading up that committee, and she's been cracking the whip for Mr. Allinger, working very hard with Lois Harper from the museum. The tourism committee, tourism is working on the souvenirs with Randy Pike from Q 99, and they've got some really cool ideas to different, a little, little different than what you're generally going to see in souvenirs, so. Lots happening, it's a really busy time, and we're moving forward.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Busy activities with that committee. We'd move on to item nine point two, Council Committee of the Whole for May ninth. This was a review of our draft land use bylaws, and we get a motion to receive that set of minutes. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held May ninth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Is everything in order? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and then item nine point three is Council Committee of the Whole for May thirteenth, and that was prior to a council meeting with two items of business, one being our annexation. Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that, that we receive the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held May thirteenth, 2013. The other piece of business was the sidewalk program tender.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and that takes us to nine point four, Community Growth Committee, and Counselor Gustafson, I believe that was your committee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held May fourteenth, 2013.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Just, we had one, one item of business that we approved, a new gas compression building out at the Aquiterra facility here in Grand Prairie, so. Look forward to making, making lots of gas.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. We move on to item nine point five, Community Living Committee, and Counselor Crokin, I believe that was your committee?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held May fourteenth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing nothing coming up, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I further move council award tender T 3243313, Grand Prairie Live Theatre renovation to T West Construction Limited in the amount of five hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars, excluding GST. And just to speak to that briefly, Mayor Given, this is one of our buildings, it's our infrastructure. This was built in 1962, and the Grand Prairie Live Theatre, they, they lease it from us, and what's this money's being spent for? It's being, it's some safety issues, things to bring it up to fire code, and what we're doing is we're sealing it, this, the theatre from the curling ring. So, this amount of money is being spent on our building.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that motion for the recommendation of that tender? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also recommend council award R F P 23 dash four thirty-one dash thirteen, Outreach and Support Services Initiative, O S S I, for the intake and assessment and client supports project to accredited supportive living services on a two-year contract from July the first, 2013, March thirty-first, 2015, for a total of six hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents, based on the following funding allocations from the Province of Alberta Human Services. Item one, 2013-14 funding year, July first, 2013 to March thirty-one, 2014, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-one cents. And the second is 2014-2015 funding year, April first, 2014, to March thirty-first, 2015, three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine forty-nine-ten. Just briefly, it, as, as the motion says, it's the intake and assessments, assessment, and these are flow-through funds from the Province of Alberta, and we, we administer them on behalf of this Province of Alberta.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, just slight correction on Counselor Crokin there. Item number two, you should read three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. I believe Counselor Crokin said three, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Well, that was for the package of the juice fruit.
Sure, okay, so I think Counselor Crokin's accepting that as a.
Friendly amendment, yes.
Yep, good catch. Any further discussion or debate? Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve, number one, that the existing third-party contract for the provision of transit operator services not be renewed after its month-to-month agreement expires on August thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, and, two, the existing contract service provider, Cardinal Coach Lines, UTLB, officially notified of this direction in keeping with the provision of the existing service agreement with the city of Grand Prairie. And further, council direct administration to begin the process to transition the transit operator services in-house.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I can be at this committee meeting, and I was looking forward to the transit one. I always wondered why we own the vehicles, the buses, we service them, and actually the bus drivers were contracted out, so I'm really looking at how they in-house all comes evolve, and the bus drivers in our city become part of the city of Grand Prairie employees, and then it's a complete package, and how that's detailed, and administration probably gonna have it all laid out, and looking forward to this change. I think it's a very good change.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm gonna speak in favor of this. I, not that I'm against giving a contract away from the city, or losing one to a private provider, but it's nice to see our city getting to that size where it can manage its own fleet of drivers. My understanding is that a lot of those drivers are gonna be applying for these in-house positions.
Thanks very much councillor Wong. Any further discussion or debate? Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion as well. I think it provides an opportunity to, to provide greater training, greater accountability, supervision, and, and a better service to the residents of Grand Prairie, so I think this is a positive change.
Thank you. Thanks councillor Radburn. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. This would've went up for tender, so Cardinal Coach Lines were advised of this by staff, that we were going to be putting it in-house, and the budget consideration was also looked at, that we'll be doing it for a little more, a little more efficiency by having it in-house.
Okay, thanks councillor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That takes us to, I think that was all the items of business off of that committee. Councillor Crokin, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight?
Yeah. Yes, just one, one, there was a couple of things, but Mary Nutting from the museum archives did quite a presentation, and they're, they are short, an awful lot of pictures. If anybody has any pictures, and I'm sure there's a few dusted on, a few of them in our closets and whatever, so Helen, I'm sure, will have a number of pictures that could be archivable. So keep the museum in, in your, in your little book, if you have some pictures, don't, don't, don't destroy them. Mary will look after them for you, so, thanks for Mary for her presentation.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. Councillor Rice, did you have something on that set of minutes?
I do. Can somebody fill me in on the Hillside Social Housing site?
I'm not sure I have that set of minutes at hand. Maybe we can get an administrative report to be emailed out to council.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks councillor Rice. Okay, I think that handles all the items of business there, and we move on to nine point six, council committee of the whole from May sixteenth. Motion for that set of minutes from May sixteenth? Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held May sixteen, two thousand and thirteen.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes?
Can he make it, he wasn't there.
It's a motion to receive the minutes, so any council member that wants to ring in can make a motion to receive the minutes. Anybody have any discussion or debate on the set of minutes?
He weren't there either.
Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. It moves on to nine point seven, Community Safety Committee. Councillor Wong, I believe that was your committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held May twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
Thanks very much councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note any errors or omissions in the way the minutes were recorded? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Wong?
Yes, I move that council approve the SEPED grant applications totaling twelve thousand five hundred dollars as follows. One, South Peace Ball Diamonds for twenty-five hundred dollars. Number two, John Nelson Country Estates Mobile Home Park for twenty-five hundred dollars. Three, Kirby Krupka and Company for twenty-five hundred dollars. Four, Ridgeview Manor for twenty-five hundred dollars. And five, Mad Hatters Inc. for twenty-five hundred dollars. And speaking to this, Mayor Given, this is a grant that the city has just initiated for this year. It's gonna be an ongoing thing. There's fifty thousand dollars in the budget for this. It is a matching grant. Recommendations go through our crime prevention, and the crime prevention staff actually go, go through the applications with each of the applicants, and go through the SEPED principles. That's the crime prevention through environmental design principles. The majority of these are for building, building fences to help against crime prevention, some of it's for trees, and in one case for the South Peace Ball Diamonds, it's for installing security cameras.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion to award these grants? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Wong?
I move that council award tender T twenty-nine, five fifty-two dash thirteen, Bridge Maintenance and Other Work to Ardee Rigging Limited, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty cents, minus deductions of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents, for a total of two hundred and six thousand, six hundred and five dollars and sixty cents, excluding GST. As the lowest qualified bidder, and that funding be allocated from the annual bridge repair program, and further, that additional funding of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars be transferred from the annual bridge inspection program to the annual bid, geez, that's tough to say, annual bridge repair program, to help cover the additional cost. This is for a bunch of the pedestrian bridges along the Musqueseepe corridor. There is a, there's a large number, I don't remember the number of bridges, but they go through annual maintenance, and this is the year where they're gonna do some structural repairs to some of the bridges that really need it. That isn't done every year, and that's why it's a larger budget item than normal.
Thanks very much councillor Wong. I see a few in the queue. Counts for discussion or debate, councillor Rice?
Now, in the provincial budget, bridge repairs were eliminated. Is this going to affect us, or because these are pedestrian bridges, are, have they always been at our expense, or is this some expense we're having to pick up because of the elimination in the provincial budget?
I, I believe councillor Rice, the program that you're referring to was a program that only rural municipalities had the ability to access, so it was never one that the city of Grand Prairie had access to anyhow, so the elimination of that program just eliminated an additional benefit that rural municipalities had previously.
Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was at this committee, and just some questions, it's gonna be over two hundred thousand dollars to look at, I believe, is it just the four bridges in Musqueseepe Park? And they're both the narrow ones, but it's an awful lot when a new bridge will be two hundred and fifty thousand, it's more width, so it's pretty high-priced. I'm just wondering, Christine, get a little feedback about, they'll be able to detail, like maybe we need a wider one in this area, and, you know, instead of fixing, we're gonna get it, because we can almost get a whole new bridge. I know they gotta evaluate it, but it's pretty high.
Mr. Donnelly, can you speak to the scope of work for the program?
I'll try to fill in wherever I can. From what I understand, this is for all the pedestrian bridges that are in the Musqueseepe corridor. There are four narrow bridges, but there's a bunch of the wider bridges as well that are gonna fall under this maintenance program. Administration answered some questions about what it would cost to replace a small, one of the narrow bridges with a larger bridge, and that would be about a quarter million dollars. That's not, that's not part of this work, the work is just remediation and structural repairs, painting, cleaning up, that kind of stuff.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much councillor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion for the award of this tender? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Wong, I think you had one last item of business from that agenda?
Yes, I move that council approve the annual reference level update request for an additional four members for the Grand Prairie Detachment RCMP, with the understanding that detachment resources will be managed to budget levels established by council. And speaking to this, Mayor Given, we currently have as a maximum number of staff, eighty-four RCMP officers. Now, due to transfers, which happen on a regular basis, maternity and paternity leaves, and just waiting periods between requisitioning staff and those staff positions being filled, there's always a vacancy. There's also sick leaves and, and, and health, or people who leave for health reasons and things like that. So there's always vacancies. What the superintendent of the RCMP would like to do is have that number bumped up to, to allow him to fill an additional four positions as a management tool. It gives him flexibility to operate and provide that full-level service that we, that we budget for, but we typically can't meet because of these delays in filling these vacancies. Delays can be anywhere from a few weeks to, you know, half a year, that kind of thing. RCMP officers that transfer from other northern or rural communities, they typically have a harder time selling their homes, and they don't come to Grand Prairie until they sell their homes. So there's, there's various reasons. The idea is to just allow flexibility, doesn't mean that he's gonna go and hire four people right away, although he might, but due to transfers that happen every year, he feels that he could stay within the budgeted level.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? The only other thing I'd say is that, to add to what councillor Wong had, was to say that the RCMP does have a reserve that was created for just this sort of purpose by council. The policy on the use of that reserve is to, the reserve builds to a maximum of funding two full-time positions at the RCMP, and so in the unlikely event where the RCMP was ever fully staffed, above the eighty-four members that council had budgeted for, there was a reserve to be able to cover any overages there. In years where they are understaffed, the, the budget, sorry, the reserve is replenished. And so essentially, we're gonna pay for eighty-four officers, but allow him, if need be, to maintain that level of service, to have actually eighty-eight people on his establishment chart. And so certainly appreciate the administration bringing this opportunity forward to maintain the level of service that council is paying for and that the community expects. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Wong, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
There are a couple of things to highlight. We had a presentation from Alert, which is the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Teams. They're a high-level team that deals with organized crime across the province. The city of Grand Prairie contributes a number of officers for that, for those positions, and they're matched by provincial resources, and they go, they basically follow organized crime to, to the locations where they're, where they're really needed. The other thing that we discussed was bylaw C twelve-twenty-six, the Animals and Responsible Pet Ownership bylaw, and that's gonna be available for the public to have input on over the next little while. We're gonna have two or three public open house opportunities, really encourage people who have pets and people, or people who are affected by pets, to get out there and provide their feedback.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Wong. And that takes us to item nine point eight, councillor Radburn, the Corporate Services Committee from May twenty-first.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held May twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Councillor Rice? No, nothing? Okay, thank you. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we spotted with our eagle-eyed council? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that, and that motion carries. Councillor Radburn, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
This was a quarterly financial, unaudited financial statement update, was our only agenda item, and that showed at this point in time, four hundred and four, all things being equal, translating to the end of the year would be a four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar surplus, but much happens in the last, in the next three quarters of the year. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. I believe that handles all of our items of committee business. We do have one item of correspondence, I see councillor Rice, were you in the queue?
No.
For one item of correspondence. So we move on to item ten point one, correspondence from the Downtown Association regarding a paintball facility at the Montrose Cultural Site. Council has in their package, councillor Rice? Councillor Rice will declare conflict of interest, as Downtown Association is her employer, and she will vacate council chambers. So council has in their package the letter of correspondence expressing opposition to the placement of temporary paintball facility at the Montrose Cultural Centre site, so we can, is an item on our agenda, and so we do have to have an action coming out of that. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move we receive this letter for information, please.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. So, and just speaking to that, this was an opportunity that was raised at committee, committee directed administration to work with the applicant and bring back to committee potential contract, and so this issue would surface again at the committee level, and so council has now been informed of the Downtown Association's position. Okay? Any further discussion or debate on the motion to receive for information? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We can ask councillor Rice to come back into the council chambers, and we had one deleg- sorry, that takes us to delegation business. We had one delegation, Mr. Charbonneau, with his presentation regarding pay-as-you-throw waste removal and garbage pickup. Any action coming out of this? Councillor Rice?
I would move that we receive his presentation for information, and I, if I just have a couple of questions. Aquiterra has their AGM coming up, or shareholders' meeting. Is this something you could bring up at, at their AGM? And I, so I would require, I don't know if I, do I have to make that official or just direction? Just following up on something that councillor McLean raised, so he's absolutely accurate in terms of the bottles, as it relates, well, Alberta has an eighty-three point six percent return rate on bottles and cans. It has even higher than that on glass beer bottles, you know, they can be recycled fifteen times, but that means with an eighty-three point six percent return rate, there are three point nine billion bottles and cans in this province not being recycled annually, mostly for what's called away from home, offices, workplaces. People have gotten really good about recycling their bottles and cans at home, but not so much in workplaces, so I think you're absolutely right, urging the not-for-profits. And you can, you can take, you can just take your bottles and drop them off at the bottle depot, and, and you can specify if a charity has a number, and all the proceeds will go. In the past five years, we've raised over five hundred thousand dollars, that has gone to not-for-profits just from that program, and so, you know, like getting the not-for-profits busy setting up programs in workplaces would be absolutely fabulous, so.
Thanks very, thanks very much councillor Rice. So a motion received for information, certainly something we can raise with Aquiterra at the next shareholders' meeting. We'll just say too, that Aquiterra regularly surveys its customers to see about their level of support for different initiatives, and so maybe that would be an opportunity to encourage them to include this in their next survey, to see about other options the community might be interested in. Any further discussion or debates to receive Mr. Charbonneau's presentation for information? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe that handled all of our delegation business. We had no notices of motion tonight, and that takes us to council member reports, and we'll start with councillor Gustafson and the Downtown Association. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just have a big congratulations going out to Candice Gunsilly and Kim Horzberg. They will be getting married downtown, on Hundredth Avenue between Ninety-Ninth Street and a Hundred and Second Avenue, Street, sorry. They will, yeah, they're actually getting married downtown. I hope it's a nice day. They're gonna close the traffic to vehicle traffic, close, close the road to vehicle traffic, and there's gonna be- and there's going to be a sidewalk sale, a classic car show, bounties for the kids, a petting zoo, and of course, a band. Also, GP Downtown Association, we had our visioning session a little while back and some action items out of that. We'll be, we're going to move on, on a gateway concept for downtown, increase city, and downtown association communication, and create a unique event. That's all for the Downtown Association. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Nighthawk Area Recreation Board, Counselor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. We did have a board meeting here on the twenty-first, and we've kind of got the preliminary results of the year. The financials aren't fully done yet. That'll be happening in, I believe, next week, actually, that we'll fully review them. But it does look like we are still going to hit a slight deficit in this year. From what we can tell, it's approximately twenty thousand dollars. Some of the rationale for that, I think we were very close, but some of the rationale for that is we did get a little bit of a late start getting the ticket sales going last year as a result of the uncertainty of the hill. We did have a couple of days, three critical days over the holidays that caused us to lose significant revenues. And we still seem to be having issues with power consumption. The utilities up at the, at the Nighthawk area are quite, quite high. However, it's not all bad news. We've, the overall revenue was up at the, at the hill, and once again, I'll bring a more full report in a couple of weeks' time. And we've managed to save approximately ninety-five thousand dollars in wages out at the hill as well, too, with some of the initiatives. So working very hard out there, and I think things are looking promising. Once again, we're going to have a budgeting and full financial session a week from now. We've got a planning session coming up as well, too, here at the end of June to review basically our business plan going forward and how we can be successful out there. And I believe this week, we are expecting a check as well from the casino that we worked a couple of months ago, in the, to the tune of about thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars, so that should help out with that deficit shortfall. Anyways, there will be a lot more to, to come, and I guess one other note is that the annual general meeting for the recreation area is June eleventh, and I will be there as well as most of the board, and I would certainly encourage anyone that's interested in learning more to come out and, and participate at the AGM.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. I see maybe a question for Counselor Monroe? Counselor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Counselor Monroe, is there, does the ski hill keep stats on, like, usage and how many people use the hill a year, and, you know, how many season passes are sold and things of that nature?
Absolutely. I don't, I don't have those stats available today, Counselor Gustafson, but I can certainly make that available to you and to the rest of council.
Thank you.
I see another question, Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Counselor Monroe, that's very, very good news, and I'm looking forward to the final details at the year-end, but that's a really major turnaround. And I just want to say thank you to your committee and keep up the good work, because if that comes true, that's really good news.
Counselor Monroe?
Thank you. Once again, keep in mind, we still, as far as we can tell, we still will be hitting a deficit this year. So there's still some work to be done, and there might be more information that the city's going to have to address coming forward, but there's no doubt it is a lot better than the position they were in last year.
That's great. Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. That'll take us to Northern Alberta Elected Leaders. Counselor Rice, I believe you represented the city at that last meeting?
Did. I attended the Northern Alberta Elected Leaders Meeting in Manning on Friday, May twenty-fourth. Interesting, one of the discussions was on Northern Alberta highways and, you know, maybe some requests for increased maintenance on them, which was interesting, because on the way up, there was a gravel truck rollover, and we had to detour through Dixonville because it closed the highway. So it was kind of apropos. One of the presentations was an update on the Curie Museum project, and I'm happy to pass on to the mayor presentation of their, give it back, John.
They give them all to everybody. Oh, I've got one.
From the Royal Mint for their coin collectors and coin collections, and certainly Counselor O'Toole might be able to provide more information on that, so if you could pass that to the mayor, please.
Sure, we'll keep that in the mayor's office. These things are hard to come by, and so dinosaur, the first ever glow-in-the-dark coin featuring our very own Pachyrhinosaurus lacusti.
Yes.
And so certainly appreciate that, and thank you very much for bringing it, and we'll have that at City Hall for anybody, any council members that didn't get to see one in the flesh my first time. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice.
You'll want to visit the mayor's office in the evening, because it is a glow-in-the-dark coin.
Sometime in December when it actually gets dark out there.
Yeah. That's it. The next meeting is September twentieth at Saddle Hills.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice, and thanks for attending on behalf of the city. And then Northwest Corridor Development Corporation, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. This last week, we had the, the, hang on here, the Northwest Corridors Land to Air Symposium, and we were joined by communities from Prince Rupert, MD of the Peace, MD of Clear Hills, Terrace, Prince George, Kitimat Terrace Airport, Mackenzie County, and there was approximately fifty people in attendance. Some of the speakers that were there included Carmen Hendry from the Terrace Kitimat Airport, Dave Bellows from Peace River Airport, we had an individual from the Prince George Airport. We also had the Manning Airport do a presentation on how busy they are during the fire season, and how they actually are a support to the Peace River Airport. We had guest speakers from WestJet, Fiero Pugliese, he's the executive vice president, and the president of WestJet Encore, which will be providing service to Grand Prairie here in the next month or two, seasonal. And we also had Air Canada representatives, vice president of corporate strategy, industry and government affairs, Derek Vanstone, and his assistant, director of government affairs and community relations for Western Canada, Eamon Horre Lunnley. And they spoke to us, gave us presentations, and we talked about a number of concerns and issues regarding frequency of flights, destinations, and the topic of discussion was Canadian Border Services. We were really hoping that Canadian Border Services would attend, and they did not. We'll leave it at that. But Air Canada and WestJet Encore were, could see the benefit of Canadian Border Services, so they, it suggested that they may be able to help us in some manner to maybe get the department to see our way. The Grand Prairie Airport, Brian Grant and Alvin from, from...
Alvin, Alvin Mayor?
Alvin Mayor, sorry, I'm having a tongue twister here tonight, did a great presentation on the Grand Prairie Airport and the future, and basically how the growth pattern has, has appeared in the last five years, and some of the projects that we've accomplished, including the parking lot and future expansions. So, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I think that handles all the business from agencies, boards, and commissions in which council has representatives, and we'd start with council roundtable, and we'll go, Counselor Monroe, and we'll go clockwise around to Counselor, Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On the sixteenth, I had the pleasure of attending the United Way Breakfast, and where they made the announcement, and I believe that their goal for this year is one point three million dollars, Counselor McLean, is that correct? Yeah. So, good breakfast, well-attended, and good to see that Michael Connor is still very passionate about this, and it's one heck of a lofty goal. Later that day, I attended the UDI meeting with a number of councillors here. On the seventeenth, attended a lunch with the Home Builders Association as well, too, and getting some, some great information from both the UDI and the home builders on permitting and development, and it's, it's really some appreciated feedback, and I think it'll help us with going forward. On the twenty-first, I attended the Nighthawk Board Meeting, I already referenced that. On this Sunday, the twenty-sixth, I attended the Nighthawk Alpine Ski Team BBQ and sponsor appreciation, barbecue, I guess. And this isn't to be confused with recreation, this is the ski team. They have approximately ninety kids, anywhere from the ages of, I believe, about four up to about eighteen participating. Anyways, we were awarded a sponsorship plaque with a photo of all of the kids that participates, and this, I believe the reason that the city qualified for this is through pursuit of excellence grants. So I'll maybe just pass that over to the mayor or to administration, and imagine your walls are getting pretty full.
That's right, we'll make sure that's up in City Hall. Thank you very much.
And then, the, today I stopped in and visited some of administration down at Muscat CP Park, as today was the first of two open houses in regards to our upcoming annexation. And it looked like there was a few people down there looking around and finding out more information, and once again, that'll be tomorrow at Muscat CP Park as well, too. And then, I guess just finally, I got a note here about Reading University, they're having a barbecue this Friday over at Northern Metallic, sponsored by Northern Metallic and RBC, and, and I believe it is BDO Dunwoody. So if you've got five bucks and you're hungry on Friday, please make sure you stop by Northern Metallic and support the Reading University, as I believe the city has been a big supporter of this in the past as well, too. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the fourteenth, I attended the Grand Prairie Library Board Meeting. On the fifteenth, I attended a firefighter-for-a-day boot camp. This is a program initiated by the councillors of the schools, Compass at High, St. Joe's and Peace Wapiti. They approached the fire department and their head trainer, Terry Hoyan, and they put six students through a, two days of what it was like to be, or what it's like to be a firefighter, and that's dealing with maintenance on the equipment, going through scenarios in their training facility, and dealing with some of the education and health and safety requirements that both the city and the department require. I attended both days, on and off, and it was great to see the enthusiasm by these six students, and they all did an exceptionally great job, and it looks like this program will be something that the fire department will be continuing on in the future. Part of the two days spent was actually talking to the firefighters and asking them questions, it was pretty much an open-door policy for these gentlemen, and I got to thank, or tell Counselor McLean that there was a lady in attendance, and I'm thinking that she did pretty darn good. She, she has a future, or she had a past career as a gymnast, and she was quite flexible going through some of the scenarios, climbing the ladder and getting onto the roof and using a chainsaw and using the hose and putting out fires, and it was a pretty good thing. On the, later that day, on the sixteenth, I also attended and joined council with the Urban Development Institute, and we discussed a many good topics regarding our land use bylaw. On the seventeenth, we joined the Canadian Home Builders Association with some of the council members. Once again, on the twenty-second and the twenty-third, on the twenty-second, I was joined by Counselor Lauren Radburn and Counselor John Crokin at the NCDC Open House, which was sponsored by the Grand Prairie Airport. And on the twenty-third, I attended the Land to Air Conference. On this past Saturday, I was on top of a tractor with, out in, out in Wembley. I also was joined by Dr. Phil Curry and the chancellor of the U of A, Ralph Young. We toured Wembley, and it was a pretty darn good day, the weather was great. Earlier the week, I also attended the EMS Western Air Rescue, which was EMS Week, and had a burger out there and got to look at the equipment, talked to some of the pilots and the nursing staff that they have there. And today, I attended the open house that the annexation is having, and while I attended, there was a number of people asking our city staff some interesting questions, and thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Got to go quickly here. May sixteenth, I also attended the UDI council information session, council committee of the whole, and in the evening, I went to the Crime Prevention Evening at Eastling Centre, where they had crime prevention staff and other community groups there, talking about their various programs and what they can offer our, our community. May seventeenth, I also attended the Home Builders Council Information Session. And May twenty-first, I went out with a number of councillors, those being Councillors Crokin, Rice, Wong, McLean, I think that's it, is it? We went to, had supper at the South Peace Centennial Museum in Beaver Lodge, and so thank you for their hospitality and for the, for the excellent meal. May twenty-second was land use bylaw review, and as Counselor O'Toole mentioned, I went to the NCDC reception. On May twenty-third, I had a very interesting day, I attended the city's exceptional service that WOW was workshop in the morning, and then in the afternoon, I had Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Planning Session. May twenty-fourth, in the evening, I went to the Persons with Developmental Disabilities Association Spring Celebration and Awards Evening, and was able to represent council and bring greetings on behalf of the mayor and council. And May twenty-seventh, today, I joined Mayor Given and Susan Smith, Physician Recruitment Officer for Alberta Health Services, to chat with a prospective doctor who may be coming to Grand Prairie. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On May thirteenth, I attended council committee of the whole meeting, an annexation and sidewalk, and then I left for Edmonton on May thirteenth to the fourteenth, I was in Edmonton for AUMA with a few other councillors, Counselor Crokin, Counselor Dan Wong, and Mayor Given. And I really look forward to this, because it's about review of the MGA, it's the Government Act, and some of the differences between towns, cities, and, and some towns going bankrupt or have to sign deals so that you don't dissolve, because of the differences with industrial taxes, linear assessment, and Counselor Rice would probably know a lot of this, being on AUMA. The next council will be going to AUMA in Edmonton, and they're hoping to have some of the cooperations that have worked in some areas where they haven't, and we have a minister that says we will step in if it doesn't work well. So anyways, very looking forward to that. It's a future, and I think it's very big for Alberta, to make it work and make it happen for all taxpayers. So I was glad to be, to attend that. On May sixteenth, I also attended with Counselor Monroe, United Way Breakfast Kickoff, and the one thing I got, the name was Mike for Connor, he's really involved, and they talked about payroll deductions, and he was hoping to raise maybe fifteen hundred, and then they match fifteen hundred, get three thousand dollars from his company of just under forty, and they raised almost nine thousand dollars. So that, that was pretty impressive, the, helped the figure, so I think they're really looking at payroll deductions down the road, maybe with some companies to get on board. Then I was very fortunate on behalf of the mayor and council to go to Parkside Grade Six for Visable Government Learning Day, teacher Bobby Noel, and it was unbelievable, the questions, the whole, it was an hour and a half, it was only going to be a half hour, forty minutes, but it was an hour and a half, and there was many, many questions, one on what kind of education you need to become a politician, there was a lot of questions on that. How could you get fired? We're all hearing stories of mayor in Toronto. So, but one of the, the big ones was graffiti, and the youngsters have known the graffiti increase in the city, and what can we do and go about to really go after this quickly? And that was the number-one questions related by grade six in Parkside, was what are you going to start doing about this graffiti and go after it? So I was very, thank you to teacher Noel for letting me come to the class and speak to the children, and... And all the questions were really, really good. So as well, on May 16th, I went to the Urban Development Institute meeting, very well-received, very good. And I was glad to be able to attend. And as well, I attended on May 16th, the council committee of the whole for Salt Munro's Concept Plan. And May 21st, I also attended the supper at Beaver Lodge, South Peace Museum. Someday, I'm going to meet their July opening where they have all the tractors running and everything going. In 20 years, I haven't been able to go to that date, but I'm sure hoping to make it one of these years. And the one thing I got from there and I'll, is I've never tried in my life was a pickled pumpkin. So it was actually different and I ate it every one I grabbed, but pickled pumpkin, I've never heard of that before. So, and then as well, on May 22nd, I attended the council committee as a whole meeting on land use bylaw. And I'll just make a quick comment to councillor O'Toole about firewomen. I'm definitely hoping there's firewomen in the forest in the near future. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gibbitt. And I'll go quickly since a lot of these have been mentioned already. On May 15th, I attended the AUMA Zone Meeting in Stony Plain. May 16th, the meeting with the Urban Developers Institute. May 17th, the Canadian Home Builders Association. I also opened some tenders at City Hall. You know it's a busy spring when they come in with a cart. They tell you it's going to be a few minutes and they wheel in boxes and boxes of tenders. So it's great to see a lot of companies bidding on work in Grand Prairie. May 21st, at Beaver Lodge for, for the South Peace Centennial Museum. Just wanted to point out that Google Maps points you to the wrong direction when you try to locate it on there. So that's never a good thing for a museum. I think I'll probably send them an email, see if they can get that fixed up. They said that it's been a problem for years. And interestingly enough, the Google car has been around Grand Prairie over the last week or so. So it's probably fortuitous timing. Anyway, going on, Saturday, May 25th, I was at the Palmeroy Hotel to listen to a presentation from Dr Phil Curry and Chancellor Ralph Young from the U of A Senate. So, you know, great that, I heard that councillor O'Toole was able to show some Grand Prairie hospitality the day before as well. Sunday, May 26th, I was at Muscat CP Park and participated in the Tellus Walk to Cure Diabetes. And I guess for today, I'd just like to wish our American viewers Happy Memorial Day.
Thanks very much councillor Wong. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbitt. I also attended the UDI luncheon, very, very, very exchanging information there and lots of stuff to learn about development property. I also went to the Chamber of Commerce Petroleum Showout at Way Out in the Tech Center. It's interesting how, you know, where, where they say there's less, less oil well rigs working in the area and everything, but really, we're just doing it faster, better, quicker and safer. So it's not that we're getting any less production. I believe we're getting more production with, with, with more innovative technology. And I also was able to open a couple tenders here, video monitoring storm system flushing and cleaning inspection tender and the 102nd Street Traffic Study from 113th Ave to 132nd Avenue tender. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. Councillor Rice?
Okay, thank you. I want to begin by thanking councillor O'Toole, who made a mad dash out to the airport to take city pins to the WestJet officials. They would have received pins at the reception that night, but the staff seemed particularly keen on watching them receive those pins. And so Kevin O'Toole, in response to a, a phone call, made a hurried trip out there and thanked him for that. It seemed to mean a lot to them. I attended the South Peace Centennial Museum with the other people on council. And on Saturday night, I, I brought greetings to the Lions Club Three Club Charter Night. So, very interesting, the district commander was up and a great evening. Want to take this opportunity to say congratulations and a huge big thank you to all those who took part in city scrub and cleaning up the neighborhoods. 200 people participated and 318 bags of litter were collected. So obviously a successful initiative. I also want to say congratulations to Aqua Terra on securing a 25-year water diversion license from the province. This, this diversion license allows diversion of water from the source, which is returned at a later time. And it will provide a secure water source for continued regional growth in the next 25 years, increasing the allowable annual withdrawals to a total of 21.5 million cubic meters. And that's enough to support a population of 130,000 people. And it ensures in a practical way, protection of a healthy aquatic ecosystem in the Wapiti River. And this means that the other alternative was a, a lake to store it, which would have cost $30 million. So it's the first of its kind. This is the first of its ki, license of its kind in Alberta. So a huge coup for Aqua Terra and congratulations to them.
Thanks councillor Rice. Councillor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbitt. On 15th, I was in Stony Plain for the AUMA's MGA review. And it was interesting sitting at table with people, the same challenges, I guess we'd call it. They talked about specialized municipalities, which is encouraging. I also, on the 22nd then, was at the Beaver Lodge, South Peace Museum, Great Ribs, as councillor Radburn had said. And I also had to babysit councillor McLean's children, beautiful children. Their father, I don't know where he was, but. On the 22nd, I also attended the EMS Western Air Rescue BBQ. It was hosted at the airport. They have some great equipment out there, they're King Air and helicopters were flying around doing touch and goes. It was quite nice to see. Later, the land use bylaw review in the afternoon. And then at 5:00 PM, I also attended the Northern Corridor Development Corporation Reception at the Palmeroy Inn, great little hors d'oeuvres and ginger ale. Then in the morning, I attended the breakfast reception at the Land to Air Symposium, didn't stay all day, though. Then on the 25th, I did a survey at the Eco Centre. They're tracking recyclables, doing a good job there, wanting to know if they needed more things there to collect or whatever. But it was, was a really nice little survey, thanks to Tom there. And I'd like to give some roses to Josie Burrows and the Parks staff. The grassed areas, they really look great. I was praying for rain a couple of days ago and guess what?
For the hail, too?
No, that was just a halo. I was saying the Hail Mary, so maybe that's what it was. And the sweeping of the sand and the gravel off the shoulders, that's really nice to see. I know it's a lot of extra work, but it really, instead of having those big humps there, get that off and they picked that up. So roses to you, Josie. And that's everything. See you in Vancouver.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. I'll try to be as brief as possible. On May 14th, I attended the announcement of the presenting sponsor for the Mighty Peace Day. A council knows, is familiar with the Mighty Peace Day event that's going to be happening at Crystal Centre this fall. Our own FYI doctors from here in Grand Prairie came on as a three-year presenting partner of the event. And so fantastic to see them coming on to support such a fantastic, fantastic youth and community-focused event. And I was pleased to be there at that announcement. On May 15th, I was in Stony Plain with other members of council at the AUMA Zone Meetings, as was mentioned previously. On May 16th, I participated in a teleconference for the Alert Board of Directors. And later on that day, attended at the meeting with the Urban Developers Institute that was mentioned by other members of council. On May 17th, I attended the meeting between council and the Grand Prairie Home Builders Association. And then on Saturday, May 18th, I had the pleasure of attending the one-year anniversary celebration of the Car Can Med, Car Land Association. This is a Filipino association representing five communities. They were there to celebrate their one-year anniversary of having been an association. Over the course of the year, council, you need to know that the association has been hard at work, ensuring that they're active both in our community and in supporting their home communities in the Philippines. They've actually raised through various events, significant sum of money to support hospitals back in the Philippines. And they've provided hospital mattresses for beds, which otherwise would have none. And each hospital mattress says Grand Prairie, Alberta, Canada on it. And so certainly appreciate the fact that they've done that. And due to the fact that this association exists and they've become so organized, they were actually successful in getting the Philippine consulate in Vancouver to have, to relocate some of their consular services to Grand Prairie for a weekend. So all of the Filipino people in the region would be able to come to Grand Prairie and have their passports renewed and access other consular services. So certainly appreciate the fact that, that they're bringing that level of service to Grand Prairie. It was great to see. On May 22nd to 24th, I was there each morning to bring greetings to the WOW customer service sessions that the city of Grand Prairie had. And I was so heartened to see nearly 400 city employees register to take part in these customer service trainings, symposiums. And certainly appreciate that commitment to customer service on behalf of our staff. And want to thank our administration for arranging that. On May, also on May 22nd, I attended at Grand Prairie Regional College where the AUMA was wrapping up their 75th anniversary of school patrolling. They had a play day for school patrolers and it was my pleasure to go there and thank all of the patrolers on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie and of their schools for their volunteer service in their schools. And later that same day, I also attended at the airport at the Western Air Rescue Open House. Western Air Rescue handles fixed wing, fixed wing medical transportation from Grand Prairie to other centers and from other centers to Grand Prairie. It was timely to go and see and explore their facility as Alberta Health Services has just recently announced a restructuring of the way they do fixed wing medical transport. They're going to be relocating another, they're going to be issuing a request for proposals, which Western Air Rescue will respond to. The request for proposals will ask for another plane to be located in Grand Prairie. So that will be an increase of one. So Alberta Health Services sees this service being one rotary transport, Stars, and then two fixed wing units, one with ALS level of service, which is essentially sort of your basic level of service, and then one critical care service fixed wing plane that would be located in here. So that's an increase of service to our, our community and our region. Certainly appreciate that. And it was great to see that Western Air Rescue is active and ready to compete for that, that opportunity, which will close earlier or later this summer. On the 23rd, I attended at Cole Parkside to speak to their grade six class about local government. I was following a tough act to follow in councillor McLean. But it was a pleasure to get, to speak to the kids when I had had to reschedule. So certainly appreciated going there. And later that day, I was at Swan Haven School for their volunteer recognition tea that was hosted by their grade two Montessori students who were doing the serving and hosting. On Saturday, the 25th, I attended at, with my family, at Canadian Tire to read a proclamation in support of Jump Start Day in the city of Grand Prairie. Jump Start is a fundraising program headed up by Canadian Tire. The funds generated stay local and are there to support children who might not otherwise be able to participate in recreation and sport activities. The Jump Start program partners with the Community Foundation and other organizations like Kidsport in Grand Prairie to ensure that, that local kids have access to great sport and recreation opportunities. On Sunday, the 26th, I attended down at Muscat CP Park for the opening of the MS Walk. And I want to say thank you very much to Interflex, who's been a longtime sponsor of the Walk. And since 1998, has contributed about $1.6 million in, in support of the MS services and research across the province. And then today, I was here at City Hall and had the pleasure of welcoming the grade one and two classes from St. Patrick's Catholic School to council chambers and talked to them a little bit about local government. I asked some of the students, I asked the students what types of people might work for the city. And the most accurate response that I got was builders. And I think that that's pretty accurate. We have builders of all kinds that work for the city. And I hadn't heard it summed up better than that. And then as councillor Radburn mentioned later on today, he and I attended and supported Alberta Health Services in their goal of recruiting a new doctor to Grand Prairie. Who, it was mentioned, his spouse is actually another physician, another psychiatric doctor, actually. And so could be a two-for-one combo, which would be great. With that, I believe that's my list of events and I'll call our meeting adjourned. Thanks very much for sticking it out with us, everybody.